It was a little girl who played the part of your daughter. Your wife, your daughter. I saw that first year in the park slash. I saw. And I don't remember what happened. What was it like?
I will. I will. I'll actually step up and they call me right here.
Well, I didn't hear.
At least it's true, but I would seem like it is now.
Alan, is Madison up here today? Is Madison up here today? The city manager?
Yeah, he's off.
Oh, he's off. May I approach you?
Fred, don't you assert.
Can I try to sound?
Oh, I see.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Here.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you.
Ready? It's on. I will call this meeting to order.
The city of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The city council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God.
Can't hear you.
Yeah.
Hello? Is this working? You may have to repeat it.
The city of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The city council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Pastor Neil Niibo of San Clemente Presbyterian Church.
Welcome Pastor Neil. Would everyone please stand and following the prayer, we're going to have the pledge of allegiance offered led by Councilman Doncheck.
Thank you. Gracious heavenly father, we come as a community of leaders and people who love this city. We pray that your spirit would be among us, that you would give us your wisdom, your guidance, your direction, your patience for one another, your love for each other. And we pray that we would be better because we've been here and because we recognize that this is a community under God. We pray in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Swartz?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Mayor Potem Ham?
Mayor Brown?
Here.
First item on the agenda is a toll road update.
Is there anyone here from the public?
Nothing to report at this time unless the council wants to update the public.
Anything from our toll?
I can update that last week, the board approved the budget. The foot hill eastern, the budget for the year was 2.2, $202 million. Over two and a half million of that was for consultants and lobbyists for this next 12 months. TCA has sent out a project study report to Caltrans for their impending eight projects, I believe, that they want to study. They are waiting for Caltrans to come back with, I guess approvals from that. They've been exchanging notes on it and they're awaiting approval before they will allow the city to see what that project study report says. I've asked for it. The one interesting thing that I would like to comment on is for the South County traffic relief effort, their purpose in need, what they have stated is to improve regional mobility during peak commuting hours and weekends. Weekends have been added to that. Provide additional north-south capacity in the case of a traffic accident. So they want to build the freeway in case there is an accident. Provide additional north-south capacity in case of an emergency. The demand they're saying is either approaching or is exceeding I-5 capacity during peak commuting hours and weekends. So they keep, they're adding weekends to all of that. They feel that they need a redundant north-south capacity in case of a traffic accident and they need sufficient capacity for evacuation and an emergency response. Any of us here know because we are so close to San Onofre that there is an emergency evacuation plan and that is to actually shut down the five and we all go north. No one gets to go south and that's with the highway patrol. So TCA is trying to say that we need another freeway to do just that. So I wanted to bring that up because it's interesting that they're still adding weekend traffic in that and that is, they should not be doing that. We shouldn't be building and studying projects based on weekend traffic. No transportation agency uses weekend traffic in their traffic models, but this agency is attempting to do that. So I just want to let the council know that those, the weekends are still in their plans.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate your diligence.
Next item is presentation of commendation to Fred Swegels.
Who is here? Hello Fred. Come on up, sir. So this is a man who needs no introduction and, oh, we have some cards too on this question. And so I'll tell you what, I'm going to give you a beautiful plaque and then we're going to have some folks who can get up here and probably honor you for your service here. We're excited to have Fred here. He actually disappeared for a little while. We were worried. We almost put you on a missing persons report out on you, but you made it back. We're appreciative of everything that you've done for this city. You know, there's this plaque here and it's a fascinating exercise because we've all known Fred for so long and has been such an integral part of our community. But there's some interesting things here that I'd like to just point out here that Fred earned a scholarship to USC where he studied journalism, Spanish, and ultimately graduated with honors in 1970. And whereas in 1971, he commenced his professional reporting career, he assumed an interim post with the Sun Post, formerly the name of the Sun Post News. Now that's 46 years ago and I know that because I was born in 1971 when you started your journalism career. Whereas as a result of his exercise of the highest journalistic standards, Fred's duties at the Sun Post were broadened from sports reporting and reporting all news and information. Whereas he has stated, he feels privileged to allow to chronicle his hometown for nearly five decades and takes pride that he has always did his best to impartially sort through reoccurring episodes of politics, which is tough. I couldn't imagine having to do it for 46 years, including initiatives, referenda, financial challenges, struggles with potholes and all the different issues that we face as a city. Whereas we want to recognize you for providing a half century, nearly a half century of reporting for our fair city. Frankly, it's hard to determine if there's anybody who's had more of an impact over the last 50 years in our community. And I just want to commend you Fred for everything you've done for the community, for the news you provided, for keeping us all informed and for providing our residents the goings-ons and everything they need to know about the city of San Clemente. Thank you, sir, for everything you've done. Now normally at this point, I would have Fred take a picture of this with me. I feel like I'm in some weird Twilight Zone episode where Fred is taking the picture with me. Here Fred, let's take a picture together. Well Fred, we won't hear from you if that's okay. Would you mind saying a few words?
Well, I was hoping it wouldn't be a big deal tonight. And I was really reluctant to reply to the invitation because I'm the guy behind the camera, not the guy in front of it. But I felt it would be bad for him to not reply and so I just tried to kind of not say anything about it and hope it would go quickly. But anyway, neither here nor there, as I said, I was privileged and honored to be able to cover my hometown for so many years, for so many decades and always, it wasn't just the, you know, most people when they start out as a rookie reporter, they cover city council meetings until one in the morning. They do it for three or four years and they say, I can't take any more of it. And they become an editor, they go to some specialty or something like that. And I just stuck it out. So anyway, it's kind of nice now, I've found in the last three months to have my life back and not be working myself into the grave. But it's also reminded me, not just of the news that I covered over the years, but of all the amazing people I had the privilege to meet and who invited me into their lives to share their stories. Because I'm just looking, this is the last Sun Post that I actually had a hand in producing. My last day was February 28th and this was the March 2nd Sun Post and it was the 90th birthday, so it was kind of cool. We got to honor the 100th birthday of Colonel Thacker and we had a remembrance on Fred Dival, who's basically, he and his mom started the historical society to save the landmarks. And we had a thing about the homeless in here, the influx and gosh, I don't know, it was, it was quite a final thing, you know, issue for me to go out on. We had a thing about the slope slippage at the church. So anyway, here's, I wanted to give this to you Tim because I wanted to, you know, another excuse for coming here tonight is to note and recognize the passing of an era in San Clemente because the Daily Sun Post, as it was known when I started working there, my first article was, I was a junior at San Clemente High School when it opened in the fall of 1964. And they asked me, I was the sports editor of the Triton and they asked me to cover the football games for the Sun Post. So my first byline was in the fall of 64 covering the Tritons. But in any event, gosh, I didn't even know what to say. It's just been a lot of fun and again, thank you to all of you for letting me into your lives and allowing me to chronicle the town and tell your stories. So that's all. Thank you.
And I did want to say on the passing of the era, the Sun Post started out in 1937, early days of San Clemente. It began as the San Clemente Sun and it was run by Mert Hackett, who for many years was the fire chief in San Clemente. In 1953, the San Clemente Post began and it was a rival. In 1960, the two of them united to form the Sun Post. It became the Daily Sun Post. It was five days a week when I was there. My first editor when I was in high school was Lynn Harris Hicks, who was the well-known anti-nuclear activist in town. And it was a five-day-a-week Monday through Friday paper and then the Register purchased it in 1993 and it became three days a week and then it went down to two and one. And you know, newspapers, they're not going through easy times these days. So it was probably only a matter of time, but I'm really thankful for the opportunity to work all those years in my hometown and enjoy it. Thank you.
Hold on one sec before you go. Council, why don't you guys come down here? Let's get a picture with Fred. This is where he is.
Tim, what do you think about having everybody, everybody stand up?
Oh, you want to do that one? Everybody want to get in the picture with us?
Sure.
Let's do that. Fred, you sit in the front. How's that?
How are we doing? What's your idea?
Yeah. Fred, oh, that's right. Here Fred, you sit.
Okay. So we're doing? Okay. We're trying to take a steam. We're going to take a picture.
Folks, follow and see if we can see. Eric, get your thing over here. Everyone's got seating.
Are we straight yet?
Like leaning forward, just like a little bit. There you go. Working with Fred looking forward.
Fred, don't leave because there's people here that want to talk about you. Here. Here.
Congratulations Fred.
Hey, make sure the sheriff's department locks the door chief. Could you make sure that Fred doesn't go anywhere, please? So we have a few people here that like to speak about Fred. First is John Dory. Following John is Susan Ambrose.
Members of the city council, my name is John Dory. I'm a resident of San Clemente and I wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you Fred for just about everything he's, I mean, it's just, this town would not survive without him, I think, over the last 46 years. I remember the first time I met Fred, that I, it was at my house. He came down, we had our first meeting for the derail the trail back in those days. So he came down to see what was going on, wrote a nice article about what we were trying to do and that was the first time I met him and that was, and then it seemed like everywhere I went, now that I know what he looked like, he was everywhere. It didn't make any difference if it was seven o'clock in the morning at a surf contest or at midnight here, he was always here. He was always somewhere. He was getting the news, passing that information along to everyone in the community so we were informed. Personally, I think what we need to do, take it upon yourselves to come up with this, but I think we need a plaque right over there because that's where he sat every day ever since I've been in this town. And I've been here, I've been in the city council for, I don't know, 100 times and he's always right over there, sitting on the floor. So I think a little plaque dedicated, space dedicated to our friend Fred Swegels would be appropriate. Think you need to agendize that. Thank you so much and thank you Fred.
Following Susan is Brenda Miller.
Good evening Fred. I couldn't miss this opportunity to come and thank you for your countless contributions to this city. I mean, you have just brightened so many lives, not only in the stories that you cover, but in the humanitarian gestures that you've made to countless people. I know I personally have called you umpteen times. I was afraid you'd never answer the phone after I kept going with different issues that were important to our community or trauma that happened to somebody in the neighborhood. And Fred was always there with a smile and concern and got articles and information to all of us. I remember when we first moved to San Clemente in the 80s and we were looking at the paper and I said, well honey, do you want to know about what's going on in San Clemente? He said, what does Fred have to say after about two years? That was, that was our go-to and you still are Fred. We miss you in that role, but we're looking forward to seeing you as you roam the streets with us in San Clemente. Thank you so much for your many excellent years of service. Job well done. Will you join me in applauding him?
Oh, Brenda. It's here. Good evening council members and my neighbor Fred. Those of you who don't know, I'm the architect of the city's award-winning bicycle pedestrian master plan and I've been at this a long time here in this town. And I have to say, I don't think that the city would have won the accolades it won at the state level and county level were it not for Fred. Fred's cover stories, I've got, I think nine or 10 of them that are focused on bicycle and multimodal transportation. It wouldn't have happened without you Fred and I'm very, very grateful. And just a quick little story, I've talked often about the Netherlands as being bicycle heaven. If heaven isn't like that, I'm not going. And Fred found himself, I emailed Fred to cover a particular meeting one afternoon and he said, well, he immediately emails me back, I'm actually in the Netherlands and I don't see what you find so great about this place. Where are the bicycles? And of course, like most of us, he was conditioned to look at the transportation world like Americans look at the transportation world. So when you have this little golden pathway with trees on both sides and it's protected from cars and there's little kids and there's old people and all ages and all abilities. And he said, oh, I think that's it across the street. And I knew that the hook was in and he was going to really take this ball and really cover it. And long story short, his cover articles led to the consulate of the Netherlands contacting me with the exclamatory statement, how are you doing that there? And it's, Fred played a big role in that. So for that, I think we all should be eternally grateful. And I know on his journalistic integrity, we live five doors down from each other. And to this day, I do not know where he ever stood or currently stands on measure C, measure A, measure V, measure W, measure P, Q, R, S, T, whatever it is. I have no idea. And that means he did his job extremely well. And for that, that justifies all the honoring he gets tonight. So thank you Fred. You're a great role model.
Following Gary is Bob Baker.
Good evening council and hello Fred. I was hoping to share just a little bit about our family. We've been here since 79 and Fred's covered, our kids doing all kinds of fun things and us at protests and different things that were really important to our lives and things that helped enrich our family's life. And I wanted to be here tonight just to thank him personally for that, but you might also, the crowd here may want to thank me because what I intended to do was have Lynn Harris Hicks on the phone right now. And the meeting may never have ended if that actually came through, if anyone's heard from Lynn, but I visited her recently. She's in a care facility. She's doing wonderful. She's 90 years old now and she's so proud of you and she, as I understand, she hired you and she never regretted a day of it. So all the love and appreciation from Lynn too.
Bob, following Bob is Wayne Eggleston.
Every time you run into Fred, every time Fred speaks, anytime you have a conversation with him, he's always got some other nugget that you never heard of before. Just like Lynn Harris Hicks hired me at the Sun Post. Who knew that? I mean, a couple of people, I'm sure. Fred's got 10 million nuggets in his head. Did anybody know that the beaches in San Clemente used to be owned privately? Of course, a couple of people do, but, but a lot of people don't. I think one of the things that we should all encourage Fred to do would be to compile all these nuggets into a book of San Clemente history because we need an update. I mean, the historical society's book is a little dated and it talks about, you know, times from many years ago. Fred, I think you would be doing one fabulous thing if you could compile those nuggets and put me on the
if you could compile those nuggets and put me on the list. I'll take a copy. So, and thank you from everybody, you know, in my family and my crowd. Thank you very much for doing such a great job here in San Clemente for so many years. Thank you, Fred.
Following Wayne is Chief Peters. And that's a large card on the side in case anybody else wants to put one in.
Thank you, Fred. Unreal. John Dory mentioned that we should have a plaque there for Fred. And I think that's a great idea, John. But I think also, we need to have a statue at the top of Del Mar for Fred Swegles. Right? Right? I think we should. Absolutely.
I can't afford to make another statue. We already have, you know.
That's okay. We can raise funds to do that.
A silver statue, right? Silver?
Of course. Of course. When I first met Fred, it was when I moved from the other side of the freeway to the Pier Bowl and found out that, in fact, the City Council wanted to destroy two historic homes down at the pier and build a 76-unit motel. I was enraged. A number of us, in fact, organized neighbors. And we had a huge amount of impact, to say the least. And I met Fred. I met Fred right down at the pier at that time. And that's what really launched me into politics, really, way back when. But Fred has covered us in this community forever and ever and ever. And I'm so grateful to you, Fred, for all your journalistic expertise and compassion and integrity. And I really mean integrity. You know, way back when, even in the early 90s, we were trying to save San Clemente. San Clemente always needs saved. It's never just, you can never just relax and say, "Okay, everything's fine." It always needs saved. And so, Fred, keep up. You need to still write articles about San Clemente. You can't just retire. You have to write articles about San Clemente. Thank you.
Chief Peters? How many, Bob? Bob, how many San Clementes has he been to?
He's been to at least three. How many San Clementes have you been to around the world?
So, just so the audience, is that true? That's true?
Yes.
You've been to a dozen San Clementes? How do they stack up? Are we the best?
Spain, Italy, France.
Spain, Italy, France.
Or Hollywood, Brooklyn, our sister city in Argentina, Chile, Ecuador, Mexico, the Philippines, and St. Clement's Islands in Maryland.
That's fantastic. That's amazing. That's really cool, actually. I'm not going to lie. Chief.
So, I put in a card to speak on this one. Any kid growing up in the city of San Clemente probably has a mom that kept scrapbooks of any time that they were in the newspaper for any reason. I was at the boys' club starting at about 5, the Boys and Girls Club, starting at about 5. And Fred covered everything for me growing up, including high school. And he has this uncanny way of, even if you're winning a citizenship award at 6, it making you feel incredibly huge at that moment. And then coming back as the chief, it's a strange feeling when the media calls you and wants a statement because you're really careful with what you say because it can be misquoted. The first time Fred called me, it was like talking to an old friend. And the trust that I had in his reporting, and Eric is doing his best to step into his shoes. But from my heart, Fred, I agree with everybody. You're an icon of this community. 47 years, 46 years. Holy cow. So, I mean, I'm old, too. So, anyways, I just wanted to step up here and say from my heart, from growing up here, thank you for all you did.
Fred, thanks again for your service to City San Clemente Council. Any comments?
I'd like to say something. So, Chief, you stole my thunder there a little bit. I was going to talk about the first time Fred Swegles came up to me and wrote my name in the paper and how awesome it makes you feel. But the next story I was going to tell is, if you talk to anybody who's ever been to San Clemente, they don't ask you about any of the former mayors that are in town or any of the current council members. The first thing they go is, "Fred Swegles still reporting the news." And unfortunately, for the first time, I'm going to have to say no. So, it's an end of an era. Fred, thank you for everything you've done for this community. And we're going to miss you sorely. Thank you.
Yeah. And I just want to go back and say, you know, I met Fred when I, 20-something years ago and just moved down here and decided to get involved with the community. And was, a friendly City Council actually appointed me to the Parks and Rec Commission. And so, that's when I started meeting with Fred and talking about issues and so on and so forth. So, it's, for me, it's been a fairly long relationship. San Clemente is where I've lived longer than I've lived anywhere in my life. So, this is my hometown. But Fred, and you are the hometown representative. I don't care what they say. Fred Swegles is synonymous for San Clemente. So, thank you for all your years. I appreciate it very much.
I don't know what to say without getting emotional, Fred. So, I just thank you for everything. I think you should work for the city. We're in desperate need of an information officer. I just, you know, anything good in this city happened because of you. I think about Courtney Sandcastle. I think about the Safety Quiet Zone. I think about the Bicycle Master Plan. I think about your even-handed reporting on the nuclear energy issues. I can just go down the list. And you're just the real deal. And I consider it a privilege to have been on City Council while you were covering the city. So, don't be a stranger. I'll see you on the beach trail at 7:00 tomorrow morning. Okay?
Thanks again, Fred.
Members of the audience who wish to address the Council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes which should give his or her presentation. And I have one part.
Okay. We have Joe Greenfelt. Come on up.
Hi, Joe. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, pro temp, Council members, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm speaking on the topic of cannabis. We, those of us who are in support of cannabis, come to these council meetings almost religiously and speak our mind. However, we do not get to hear from you and what is on your mind in regards to this. Oh, sure, you placate us by allowing us to speak when it is our turn. When will you put cannabis on the agenda so that we can have a real discussion? When will you put your staff to work to do research in preparation for the inevitable acceptance of cannabis in this town? I respectfully request that each one of you prepare a position paper on cannabis so that we, the community at large, knows where you stand on the issues. We would like to know where you agree and where you disagree with all our arguments. I believe we have the right to know, especially with the impending elections coming in November. And especially because the citizens of San Clemente voted nearly 60% in favor of legalization. I happened to see our mission statement and declaration of core values on the city website and found you to be in violation of some of these. Guiding development to ensure responsible growth? Not being done. Providing for the city's long-term stability through promotion of economic vitality? Not being done. We are well-prepared, thorough, and accurate? We are not. You have no basis on the cannabis issue. We always give our best effort and respond in a timely fashion. I've been coming here for nearly a year now. Nobody's responded to me. I've written letters, emails. Not one response. We seek a win-win solutions. Well, maybe that's so on other matters, but certainly not on the cannabis issue. We apply rules and regulations fairly and consistently. Again, hasn't been done on the cannabis issue. We do what is right, not what is easy. I wish that was correct. We listen well and work hard to understand needs. I know you listen, I don't know how well. All we are asking for is for a fair hearing, discussion, implementation of ordinances that will allow for legal medical delivery of cannabis to patients in our community. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Could we have a motion waiving, reading, and full of all resolutions and ordinances?
Motion by Hamm, second by Schwartz. All those in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0.
Close session report, City Attorney.
So, I don't have anything to report, but I believe your special counsel has an item to report on.
Okay, great. Welcome, Ellen, to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm pleased to report tonight that the City Council has settled all of the litigation, Villa San Clemente versus the City of San Clemente, eight lawsuits and the one administrative action that is on the subject matter of your closed session tonight. So, the settlement agreement has been signed, as you know, and it's available for public distribution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric, when will that be available for the public to see online?
We can make it available tomorrow morning on the city's website. So, it's available for the public to see.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Ellen, for your help on that.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. I have not received any requests for any report.
Lori?
P.
Item P. Steve? I don't have anything. Chris? Kathy? P also. Motion, move the balance?
So, move.
Motion by Donald Chuck, second by Schwartz. All those in favor? Aye. Item P. Lori and Kathy?
Okay. I've got two things. Just as a matter of principle, when $2 million of a decision package is in front of us, I don't believe it should appear in the consent calendar. So, I think going forward, I'd want to see it somewhere where a staff report is required because in the world of our budget, it's a lot of money. So, I'd like to say that. My question has to do with the, get organized here, the land care contracts. So, I did the addition for '09, '10, '11, '12, '13, '14, and '15, which are all increases to the land care budget. And it looks to me like it rolls up to about $1,009,000, something like that. Is that correct?
It's $1,432,000.
Okay. That's why you get the big bucks. Okay. $1,432,000.
That's for six months.
For six months. Thank you. And so, that's my question. I've got a couple of questions. One, we operate on a fiscal year. So, basically, we're kicking off the fiscal year with $1,500,000 in surplus for one vendor. And I understand it's unbundled and it includes things like parks maintenance. And I think this is.
Beach maintenance, streetscapes, restroom cleaning.
Yeah. So, my question is, as a percentage of what was approved before tonight, what does this $1,434,000, what's the increase in our position with land care?
It's $134,000 and change. It's $134,701 increase for six months over five contracts.
Okay. So, it's a 10%?
Overall, with the entire grouping of all of these contracts, it's a 19.5% increase per contract except for the Old Chamber of Commerce building. That remained status quo at 0%. And also, the '09, '10 negotio, the new City Hall, did not go up. So, the other five contracts all went up by 19.5%. After this agenda was released, we negotiated the streetscape back down to 19.5% from the '26. So, that new increase is $27,161 versus $29,049.
Okay. Why would we be going into a new fiscal year already with that kind of an increase, is my question?
The contracts, all of our contracts, well, 21 of our contracts are sunsetting June 30 of this year.
Okay.
We rewrote all the specifications, updated them, did all of that. We were, there were some delays getting a contract template. We're now out to bid on all of these contracts. The thinking is, they close on June 26th, next Tuesday. We would hope to come to council for an awarded bid in July, then get the contract signed and terminate the contracts with land care and start fresh with, you know, a new contract. We don't intend on going the full six months.
Thank you. That's what I need you to know. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
And I just want to quit just to follow up on that. So, from what I understand, we're going to rebid. So, these increases may, are just placeholders that may go away. We may get back to where we were prior, even less.
Or it could go the other way.
Yeah.
There's no way to know.
There's been a movement on prevailing wage components, on a lot of the treescape maintenance, a lot of the contracts. And then, I believe, we're also with the updates of bonding on a lot of the survey.
We have, these include performance and payment bonds.
Yeah. And so, we're going to see an increase, you know, on these things.
To be, land care has held their cost since 2005. They have not gotten an extra dime for 18 years.
Are they part of the RFP process if they choose?
If they choose.
Yeah. All I can say is, right now, we're getting into a very heavy construction and landscape season. We're seeing a big spike and all that. So, the problem of that is, is when there's a lot of work out there, bids have a tendency to go higher. So, hopefully, we'll wish for the best thing.
And just for clarification, the reason they're requesting the increase is due to the fact that their contracts are unique and that we require the frequencies to go up between May 15th and September 15th. And they're not able to recoup these costs in the wintertime like they normally would with a six-month extension. And that's why they had to raise.
That makes sense. That makes a lot of sense. Thanks.
Kathy?
That was my only question. I saw that these were all for six months. I just wanted to see where we were on the bidding process for that. I understood what you were doing. Got to keep the city going through the summer. So, that was all I wanted to know. And you answered all the questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
I'll move it.
Motion by Donald Chuck, second by Hamm. All those in favor? Aye.
And Randy, I want to thank you for your good work. You're really whipping the city into shape.
Oh, it's my staff. It's not me.
Pass on the gratitude.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the City Council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first public hearing is to consider adoption of the draft 2018-19 Annual Action Plan for Use of Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Good evening. Carl Steele, Senior Planner with Community Development. I have a brief presentation. Tonight, we have the draft 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan for expenditures of Community Development Block Grant Funds. development block grant funds. Purpose of the plan is to receive the city's allocated CBG funds and provide development project details in connection with our CBG grant. The annual action plan is included as attachment one with the staff report before you, and staff recommends that the city council approve and adopt the draft 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorize the city manager to submit the plan to HUD and to execute the HUD contract. And we've provided a memo to council regarding additional attachments referenced in the plan. And tonight, we also have Mike Laneras with us, which is, who's our CBG consultant, available for questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Carl. Appreciate that concise report. Hero for our time. Any questions for Carl? He's sat down, so we really can't ask any now.
Nope.
Yeah, that's right.
I think he's heard the, what council usually does to a new planner, and we forgot to do it when the first time Carl came up.
He's in the parking lot now. He ran out of the building. No, I'm just kidding, Carl, you're kidding. We do have a card. Why don't we hear the public comment in this? So, with this, Iowa, it's a public hearing, right? Need to open the public hearing. Andrew Nero, please come up, sir.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Andrew Nero, and I am the program coordinator for Comino Health Center. I'd first off like to thank you for your many years of support to our organization. Comino Health Center is a nonprofit community health center that provides affordable quality primary health care to the underserved in South Orange County. We are a federally qualified health center with a board of directors that consists of health center patients and service professionals. We offer services in the areas of medical, dental, behavioral health, a women, infants, and children program, and we're also looking to add optometry services later this year. We now have three clinics in the cities of Lake Forest, San Juan Cabestranos, and San Clemente. The addition of the San Clemente Clinic in 2015 allows San Clemente residents easier access to our services by having a health center in the city in which they reside. In fiscal year 2017, 17% of Comino Health Center patients were residents of San Clemente. 91% of these individuals fell in the extremely low-income category. In fiscal year 2017, we provided 7,048 visits to 2,472 San Clemente residents. This represents a 13% increase from the 2,195 individuals seen in fiscal year 2016. The CBG funding we seek from the City of San Clemente in fiscal year 2019 will be used to offset the rent expenses associated with our San Clemente Clinic. Thank you for your continued support for Comino Health Center.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for coming out and speaking about what you guys do, and thanks for all the service you guys provide our community.
Here, here. Great. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council?
I'll move the item if there's no discussion.
Motion by Hamm, second by Schwartz. Any other comments?
It's good for the public.
Let's go ahead and read it. We do have a motion by Hamm and a second by Schwartz. He'll be reading the item just for the public clarity.
Yeah, let me amend my motion to include the verbiage here for the CBG. So, I move that we approve, staff recommendation, which is number one, approve and adopt the draft 2018-19 Annual Action Plan for Use of Community Development Block Grant Funds. Two, authorize the city manager to submit the annual action plan to HUD, which will execute the HUD contract.
Okay, we have the amended motion by Hamm with the reading and the second motion, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Passes five zero.
Next public hearing is to consider the subdivision of a 22,263 square foot parcel into two parcels for future development of two single-family residences and demolition of the existing single-family residence at 323 West Paseo de Cristobal.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Cecilia Gallardo-Daly, Community Development Director. This is a proposal to subdivide a lot that is, excuse me, big. Let's see here. It is a 22,263 square foot lot. They are going to take this single parcel and subdivide it into two. There is an existing residence on the property that'll be demolished. When this item went before the planning commission, the planning commission added a condition that requires that the house be demolished when the, prior to recordation of the map. And you'll see that this lot has frontages on two streets, so each of the lot will have its own access. The recommendation is for the approval of the tentative parcel map. There is also a site plan permit required. That's required when there is a residential dwelling on a property that's being subdivided. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions regarding this?
I'll move it.
Well, we want any cards on the question?
I understand.
We do not have any cards.
Anybody have any comment?
The applicant is here if the council has technical questions about the subdivision.
I don't believe we do. We have. Steve, do you want to read the motion?
Sure.
Oh, we have, it's public comment, I'm sorry. Open the public hearing. My apologies. Seeing no, seeing no comments or no submitted, I will close the public hearing, and now I will entertain a motion.
All right, so I'll move that we adopt resolution number 18-24 entitled "A Resolution of City Council of the City of San Clemente, California Approving Tentative Parcel Map 2017-143, PLN 18-089, and Site Plan Permit 18-088, Cristobal Parcel Map, A Request to Subdivide One Lot into Two Lots and to Demolish the Existing Single Family Residents Located at 323 West Paseo de Cristobal."
Motion by Schwartz, second by Hamm. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the next item on the agenda relates to the general municipal election that'll be held on November 6, 2018. On that ballot, the citizens of San Clemente will be asked to vote to fill three vacancies on the city council for full terms of four years. The candidate filing period will take place from July 16th to August 10th at 5:00 p.m. If one or more of the three incumbents whose terms are due to expire this year don't file for reelection by that August 10th deadline, the filing period will be extended to August 15th at 5:30 for all San Clemente registered voters, except the incumbents that fail to file by August 10th. Council voted on August 30th of 2016 to call the general municipal election. The reason that that was done, basically almost two years early, was because of the initiative for the election of council members by district. The election code requires that councils schedule that for election at that time. So, we already have processed the resolutions that call the election and also that request the board of supervisors to allow us to consolidate because the elections code also requires that those two actions be taken at the same time. So, the items that are, that remain for you to act upon are to adopt a resolution relating to candidate statements. If you don't adopt that resolution, the city would have to pay for all the publications of candidate statements. The other thing that I'm asking you to determine is what to do in the event of a tie vote. You have to decide that before the election. You have the option to either adopt a resolution determining that a runoff election will take place, or you could simply determine that the tie would be resolved through a lot. And then the last thing. It could be, yeah. Exactly. And the legal deadline for the Orange County Register of Voters to receive any additional measures for the November 6th ballot is 5:00 p.m. on August 10th. At that time, I would have to deliver to them any resolution adding any ballot measures to the ballot, and they also ask at that time to receive the arguments, the impartial analysis, the text of the measure, everything. So, if there's anything else that council wants on the ballot, speak now or forever hold your peace so that we can come back on July 24th, which is your last meeting prior to that deadline with the paperwork necessary. So, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joanne. We appreciate your knowledge and diligence. Any questions for Joanne from the council?
Can, I'd be refreshed on where we stand on the TOT.
Great question.
Yeah, is that going to be part of this year's election?
So, I can address that question. So, council member Doncheck, mayor, members of the city council. Currently, the city is conducting some polling as it relates to TOT and some other ballot initiatives, and once we receive that data, we'll be coming back to the council with information and updates and seek direction on potential ballot measures.
Okay, the July meeting?
Yes, sir.
We would have to have paperwork written by July 24th for council to adopt unless you had a special meeting.
And I'll defer to the city attorney. I know that there's a deadline that's specific to August with regards to ballot measures, but we'll work with the clerk to make sure that we can address it.
Because I, speaking, I guess just for myself, that is a high level of interest, so I am interested in seeing something, whether we go forward with it or not, but I definitely think we should have the opportunity to look at what the initiative might look like.
Absolutely.
So, what we could do is come back with the paperwork so that we're, you're ready in the event you do decide to move on that.
My question to Joanne, what do we normally do when there's a runoff? What has our history been?
Last year, you voted for a tie vote, for the lot, and I think about four years ago, you voted for the lot, and to my recollection, every other year, you voted for a runoff.
Who pays for a runoff?
We pay for a runoff, and they can be costly because we could be in that election by ourselves.
It's the only way to go, though. I mean, or you were going to say draw from a hat?
I'm saying I don't want to spend any more money.
Steve, I'm looking in the audience at one particular member who'd been really bummed out if it would have been 300 votes different and it would have been, it would have been tie, then he would not have been stoked on the pulling from the hat.
Well, we're going to be saying with him and I, if it was a couple hundred votes different, so.
I, I think in the incredibly unlikely event of a runoff, I think the only satisfactory resolution is, is that you let it be voted the people.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. It's, the likelihood is in fractions of a percentage.
Well, except for the issue Laura just brought up with seven votes.
Oh, TOT was only six votes, right? Yeah, so, yeah.
I'm getting a couple of us thinking about a tie.
It's never said never before.
Oh. Well, I have a question. Term limits. Is that, is that a council vote or is that voted the people? How would that work?
You know, I did a report on that about 10 years ago. I can, why don't I put copies of the council trades? Because there was, I did quite a bit of research on that.
The other one, since we're upcasting the net, was we talked about whether the city clerk and the treasurer position should be elected positions.
That's right.
Yeah.
I thought we made a decision on that last...
Yeah, that it was fine the way it was, yeah, but it's two years later.
Okay, if you could look, if you could provide that information, I'd greatly appreciate it.
So, what are we supposed to do now?
We just need to take action.
So, I want to come back with paperwork for TOT.
Right.
Did you want to give it? Okay. If you decide to do that, do you want to say how much the TOT would be for the paperwork or just leave that blank and talk about it then or?
I don't think we have the data.
I think we, yeah, we think we should wait for the data and then determine what next steps would be as it relates to ballot measures.
You know, and I have no, I would vote for, you know, if this, this TOT is, and what we're pulling on is so important, I would have no problem voting for a special meeting for us to come back in order to meet the clerk's deadline, you know, if we can't do it by the next meeting. I think it's so important, and it just, these dates just happen to fall how they are.
It would only be the difference of a couple days because don't forget, the registrar of voters, in addition to needing our resolution to add an item to the ballot, they need the arguments. The arguments need to be posted for at least a week. I have to have them translated into Spanish.
We have all this stuff preloaded, though, in your files somewhere from two years ago, correct?
As if you do the same exact thing.
I think it's between them to work it out.
Yeah. Well, why don't we do this? My thought was, why don't we just go ahead and direct staff to come forward with it? And then if we decide on July 16th, we don't, or 26th, whatever the date is, we don't want to move forward, then we just say, no, thank you. So, the directions are move forward with it. So, I moved that.
That's the best way to go, but we are going to wait on the amount, I would assume.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I would ask for you to...
So, I move that we adopt, or did we decide?
Oh, well, the candidate statements, we absolutely have to do, and then we also have to do the runoff. Those are the two questions.
So, you would pick two A.
And then the third part is the items we're going to be directing. Is that direction or is that a vote?
Either way.
Okay, so why don't we do the two easy ones and then we'll do the last one? Anybody got that figured out?
So, one and two A, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we adopt resolution number 18-25 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California Adopting Regulations for Candidates for Elective Office Pertaining to Candidate Statements Submitted to the Voters at an Election to Be Held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018," and that we adopt resolution number 18-26 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California Providing for the Conduct of a Special Runoff Election for Elective Offices in the Event of a Tie Vote at the General Municipal Election of November 6, 2018."
Second. Motion by Doncheck, second by Hamm. All those in favor? Aye.
And then I move that we direct staff to return at our next public meeting with a ballot initiative for TOT with the amounts to be discussed and done in a way so that we recognize the deadlines stated by the city clerk.
If we have anything additional that we find out from our survey and with regards to ballot measures, we'll come back to the council with it at that time as well.
Got a motion by Doncheck, second by Hamm. Are we all clear on this? I see puzzlement.
Yeah.
Clear.
No, I understand.
Okay.
I like what we're doing, but...
Okay. Well, we'll have the opportunity to talk about it then. Motion by Doncheck, second by Hamm. All those in favor? Aye. Passes five zero.
Great job, Joanne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and next, the next item is report from Marine Safety concerning the possibility of allowing the use of soft top surfboards in the swimming area at T Street Beach during summer blackball hours on a trial basis.
Great. Good evening, mayor and council.
Rod, I hate to do this to you. Can we take a five-minute break?
Absolutely.
Is that okay? Thank you.
And chief.
And chief, sorry, sorry, sorry. Oh, okay, well, that's perfect. Give them some time.
Okay, yeah, this is pretty lucky. Is it higher than normal? Is it, is it? Want me to see if anybody else is on? Hello, hello, hello? Test, 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 test. I mean, it's... Okay, then leave, then leave it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and convene, reconvene. Thank you, council, for being so efficient.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Bill Humphreys, Marine Safety Chief, and I'm here to talk about a proposition for allowing soft top surfboards to be used in the swim area at T Street. So, I'm going to switch this. So, T- So, T Street, just a little background, is one of our most popular beaches in San Clemente with swimmers, surfers, bodyboarders. Because of that popularity, and it's a very concentrated break, we separate swimmers and surfers for safety, and not just for safety, for enjoyment. So, the surfers have the morning and evening hours. This is in the summer. In the rest of the year, it's free for all. Just, I'm talking just summer months. And the swimmers and bodyboarders get it in the main part of the day. Just, that's very generic. Blackball history. When I first started in the 70s, the peak at T Street was split. By that, I meant the south part of the wave was given to surfers and the north part of the wave was given to swimmers. It was chaos most of the time, especially since the current in the summers from the south to the north, which just pushes all the surfers over. And not many surfers are willing to just turn out of a wave when they hit this imaginary line. So, we had a lot of problems. We did have a boat at the time. The boat was stationed at T Street quite a bit enforcing that. So, in the early 80s, the blackball policy was created. I was a hardcore surfer and like to still consider myself a surfer. I was a little bit opposed, didn't really, you know, see it completely from management perspective and all the ins and outs, but quickly saw the benefits because we had this multiple meetings with the public at commission meetings. So, groups of surfers, bodyboarders, body surfers, we had a real strong body surfing group. And they came to an agreement that the surfers would get it in the morning and the evening, when surfers generally prefer the waves for surfing, and the swimmers would get it in the middle of the day. And it ended up working out real well from a safety perspective. We've had zero incidents when we've had the blackball up between surfer and swimmer interaction, which makes sense. So, we've had multiple reviews over the years. There's been some tweaks here and there, but the general idea has stayed in place. The last big reviews we had were October 2016 and May of 2017 at the Park and Rec Commission. Both times resulted in no changes being recommended. Policy allows equal access to the break in the summer. It's pretty much split, about seven and a half hours for both groups. And again, surfers morning, evening, when the wind is calm. And the policy with consistency, there's been a lot of talk about having this flexibility, but with flexibility comes frustration. Surfers know they can come down at 6 o'clock and we're gonna take the blackball down. So, if we, you know, on a general weekend, we may, if we just did a count, go, "Well, there's 200 swimmers out there." We would just leave the blackball up if we didn't say, "6 o'clock, it's coming down. The surfers get a chance." There would be a lot of frustration either way, either in the morning or the afternoon. So, there are quite a few all-day surfing options in San Clemente and in the surrounding areas. So, I just point this out because it's not that, you know, T Street is a premier spot. There's no doubt about that, and which is why everybody wants to be there. But we have San Onofre Churches and Trussells, which I know are in San Diego County, but they're right around the corner, and there's surfing all day at those places. Cotton's, all-day surfing, Lost Winds, North Side of the Pier, Mariposa 204. So, pretty much 50% of San Clemente beaches, city beaches, are open to surfing all day throughout the summer and then rest of the time year-round. And the state beach, I talked to the state chief, and 50% of the area between Cotton's and Riviera that's managed by the state is open to surfing also. So, I just want to point out there are surfing options. So, the trial, there was a request by council for consideration of a soft top trial, allowing the use of soft tops in the swim area, limiting the size to eight foot maximum and requiring a leash, and do a one-month trial, but begin Monday, this was recently provided to me, after July 4th, so July 9th would be the trial start period. So, concerns, these concerns, they come from Marine Safety, but additionally, I reached out to the California lifeguard chiefs to see what are other cities doing. And I'm president of the California Lifeguard Association, so I also reached out to the association to see what was going on. Pretty much everybody reiterated the exact same concerns. Nobody that separates swimming and surfing allows soft top surfboards in the swim area with one exception, and that's Coronado, which is not really a surf mecca. And they describe themselves as such. So, there's some concerns. I'll get into some more details, but the size of the boards, there's fins. Surfers are falling from an elevated position, and generally, surfers have less control of their board when they fall. A bodyboarder hangs onto their board. Enjoyment of the swimmers, for the swimmers, there's a certain enjoyment factor of going out and not having to worry about surfboards, you know, banging you in the head. Distraction to lifeguards, this is a big concern to us because as we're trying to evaluate whether it's a hardboard or a softboard or a leash or no leash, it takes your eyes off of looking for signs and symptoms of swimmers in trouble. Enforcement challenges, there's a whole variety because it's a super gray area now versus black and white. And anybody in law enforcement can tell you, the more of the gray area, the more difficult it becomes. And then there's potential for unintended consequences, you know? Massive influx of soft top surfboards. You know, we don't even know all the potentials. So, safety. Injury from boards, well, and we'd have to define what soft top means because Surf Tech, and my son has one that I brought in as an example of a hardboard, Councilwoman Don Cech asked me to bring in some samples. He happened to have a soft top that, well, it's a hardboard, but it's labeled "soft top." And so, they have hard epoxy sides and hard bottoms. Then INT has, they advertise, bless you, the hard fiberglass bottoms, and that's on their soft top. I just got this off the internet yesterday, or the day before. Size of the boards, soft tops, there's more mass with a soft top than a bodyboard. There's a lot more mass. And mass plus velocity equals force. So, here's one of our junior lifeguard kids carrying, you know, a smaller soft top board, and you can see the size difference. And he's, you know, he's not struggling, but he's taking his full arm to carry it, where this girl, she's holding it just with her fingertips. So, you can see that we're carrying a bodyboard. So, you can just see the difference in mass right there. This I got off the internet from walmart.com because they advertised it as a soft top. It's a foam surfboard, but it lists the weight at 15 pounds. So, that's, picture a 15-pound bag of sugar, you know, bonking you in the head. It's gonna have a potential for blunt force trauma. Fins, all the boards have, all the soft tops have some type of fin. And swimmers are especially vulnerable to fins, you know? I've had my worst surfing injuries, 10 staples down my head from a surfboard fin when I was paddling, and stitches up my leg from a surfboard fin. And, I don't know, Laura, could you make that play? This gives you just a little example of a fin.
Plastic.
Yeah. And this guy, you can't tell if he's on a soft top or not. There he goes. But you can definitely see the fin hook on that guy's head right there. So, that's what we want to avoid. And here's another. This is definitely a soft top, and we don't know if there was any damage there, but anyway, we can stop that. Not all fins are small, are tiny, are soft. This is an aftermarket fin made for the Costco surfboard. So, they advertise it, "Get turbocharged with these stiffer, high-performance fins. They'll turn your foamy into a speedster." And if you look at the bottom-right picture, you'll see how big that fin is, just like a regular surfboard. And there's actually five of them. So, and they all, pretty much, most fins have a sharp trailing edge. I highly recommend anybody that has a sharp trailing edge, sand it down, by the way. You don't need it. Safety, surfers falling on swimmers. Surfers are gonna be standing five to six feet or four feet up on top of a board. So, when they fall, they're flying down, so they're at the top of the wave, it's just gonna be higher than a bodyboarder. There's that potential. You kind of see that in the left-hand picture. There's when they fall off the back of the board, which is very common in surfing, the board shoots out forward. And if there's a swimmer's head low in the water, that's a great potential impact. You can see some other pictures there that kind of demonstrate this, what I'm talking Even, these are probably standard Costco Wave Storm surfboards. The one on the left could be a typical picture of, you know, paddling out at T Street and somebody falls off the board and it shoots at you. The guy on the right is obviously an expert and, you know, coming off the top real hard, so it's a cool picture, though. But swimmer enjoyment. So, here's some surfers, you know, all safely riding a nice mellow wave, looks like it could be a San Onofre kind of thing. And if you were swimming out in this at T Street, you, it would not be enjoyable to have those boards coming at you. The other piece of enjoyment that would definitely be missing is if you're out body surfing or bodyboarding, there's not a chance you're gonna catch the waves ahead of these guys. Even the Costco Wave Storms get into waves real early. So, they'll get into the wave 10 feet farther outside than you, and they'll have priority on the wave, and you can't take off. And if you do take off, you're just gonna get run over. So, maybe the top bodyboarders can keep up with them, but most people can't. So, enforcement. Lifeguards would need to observe and evaluate boards in the water for hard or soft, eight foot or less, leashes or no leashes, and potentially whether, you know, if people, because I did read online, people were talking about using soft fins, you know, and all of a sudden, we've got to evaluate that as well. And we would also need to stop hardboards from entering the water. So, a lot of people innocently would come down to T Street with their hardboard and look out and see, you know, other surfers out there and decide to go out. So, it's not just gonna be lifeguards, it's gonna be the beach patrol, et cetera. I would have some questions. What's the purpose of the trial? So, is the trial to determine the potential of opening it year-round or all summer next year? And how would we measure the success of the trial? So, is it lack of complaints? Is it lack of injuries? Is it a certain number of complaints or a certain number of injuries? And then does the trial get shut down if there's too many complaints or too many injuries? And then finally, and this is kind of a different twist, but how do we warn swimmers of the policy change and new risk? And I'm not talking about all the locals that are watching on TV tonight, but even people that just come to San Clemente every year and they're used to going to T Street and they're used to going out and just having a good old time. And then how do we let them know that this policy has changed and there's a new risk out there? And then kind of along with the warning and enforcement comes signage, and I don't even have an idea of how to, you know, for example, would this trial only be at T Street? So, T Street's blackballed, the beach adjacent to it is blackballed also, closer to the pier, all the way to the pier, but softboards would be allowed at T Street, but not at the other blackballed area. So, there's, to me, a great potential for a lot of confusion. So, to conclude, I mean, it would be great, fun for a lot of people, no doubt about that. Surfers would definitely enjoy it. We are opposed to Marine Safety for the reasons I already gave, concerns over safety for the swimmers, concerns of enjoyment for the swimmers, major distraction to the tower lifeguards, the unit lifeguards that are gonna have to respond to assist, and even the beach patrol sheriffs will have to definitely assist us. And then there's, beyond the distractions, taking them away, by that I mean taking them away from their primary duties, there's the enforcement challenges for lifeguards and sheriffs because it's such a gray area. So, I forgot to introduce Lieutenant Malott, who's here with me as well. So, we're both happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for, can you start with the...
I have just a quick question. What time does the blackball go up? Every day?
On weekdays, 11:00 a.m. And on weekends, 10:00 a.m.
And when does it come down?
6:00 p.m. every day. And these are summer months only.
Has any time ever been looked at by Parks and Rec of giving more time to the surfers and less to the swimmers? Or does that, the times have always worked out that that's pretty even? Because I think you mentioned seven, seven and a half hours each.
Yeah, I'm figuring that you could start surfing at about 6:00 in the morning if you were a dawn patrol person, and you can, right now, you could probably surf till 8:00 or 8:30 or something like that. So, I just did a gross calculation. So, the times have been looked at. We haven't specifically put it on the agenda, but we've had, I mentioned, May of 2017 and I think October of 2016, both meetings were publicly advertised to discuss everything about T Street policy. The boundaries, the locations, the times, et cetera. So, it has been looked at. It's certainly open to review again. I would suggest that if it is, that you have another public meeting where you deal with that because, you know, you would probably advertise it a little bit differently than discussing soft tops. Just my thoughts.
I have my own question.
Are there any other cities that you're aware of, since you're heavily involved with along the coast, that have tried this out and have mixed surfboards and soft top surfboards with swimmers?
No, other than Coronado. And that lifeguard chief did write me back, and he said, "Yeah, we do allow soft tops in the swim area." He said, "But however, recognize that in Coronado, it's windy, it's nasty, and the surf is really tiny and junky." So, it's just, you know, in the summer.
I don't think that's on the tourist pamphlets.
Yeah.
It's junky. I don't think they leave that on the website.
And that's why they don't let him do PR.
Yeah. Laurie, any questions? Chris?
I just want to say, great report, chief. You outlined a lot of good stuff, so I look forward to discussing it.
Okay, great. Let's hear from the public on this item. So, I'm gonna read some of the names of folks who want to speak on this item. If you could just come up for three minutes to speak about it, and I'll name the person to speak and the person after, so you can get ready. Starting with Sherry Crummer. Following Sherry is Greg Hulcizer. I know I said that wrong, and I apologize deeply for it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm adamantly opposed to softies in the lineup during blackball. I'm a lifelong resident of San Clemente, and I've been hardboard surfing for 60 years. And my first wave was at T Street. The reason we had a blackball was for the safety, so that the tourists, the swimmers, could have a safe place. When you start mixing boards, even if they're soft, which they really aren't, they're hard, with swimmers, it's really unsafe. I wouldn't want to be out there swimming, never, like the gentleman said, you'll never catch any waves. It's dangerous. Hardboards are fiberglass and foam, and they're hard. But softies, just because they're called softies, aren't soft. And I wouldn't want to be hit by one by a hard wave. I just wouldn't. And the fins, the fins are made of plastic. They can do some serious damage. As far as leashes go, you cannot rely on your leash. I learned that many years ago. There are certain ways you use your leash, but to rely on them is really dumb. You never know where your board is. I've been in big waves where I can't even feel my leash. The majority of the people that ride softies are inexperienced in the ocean, and that would be really unsafe for boogieboarders, for swimmers, and everybody else in the water. And then, like he said, once that gets out, you're gonna have an influx of a million people out in the water on softies. So, what's the purpose of a blackball? You've lost your swimmers, you've lost your boogieboarders. So, those are just some things to keep in mind, and I'm very much opposed to allowing softies in the blackball.
Thank you, Sherry. Next is Greg. Following Greg is Paul Bond.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Greg Hulcizer pronounced it correctly, did a great job.
Success.
I'm here to ask you tonight to not consider this trial period. Considering myself a rabid surfer, not an avid surfer. In fact, I would suggest there's probably no one more enthusiastic about surfing than me, other than my friend Sherry here, who I've known for many, many years. But lived here in San Clemente and surfed since the late 60s. I had the privilege to see my daughters grow up, learning how to swim, surf, boogieboard, ride the waves at T Street, as well as San Onofre and places like that. And although these days I spend more time at Trussells than T Street, I have spent a lot of time there, not only surfing, but I'm also boogieboard, have an old school surf mat, and I've been known to take an inflatable alligator out from time to time, just for fun. Anyway, I've also had the opportunity and the privilege for nine years to serve the city as an ocean lifeguard. From 1973 until 1982, I worked on the beach here in San Clemente and spent a lot of time at T Street, both working in the tower and in the lifeguard jeep on the beach. And this was the time that the chief was talking about. In fact, when he mentioned not being in agreement with management, I think he was referring to me back at that time. But the way he described was exactly right. It was mayhem, it was carnage. It was, it was mayhem, it was carnage, it was, you know, it was injuries. We were always writing tickets, having to pull people out of the water. It was very, very difficult. And so in the early 80s or mid 80s, whenever it was, that we changed over to the blackball, it seems to be working well, although there's always two sides to every issue. But in my time there, I saw a lot of injuries and just a lot, just a lot of difficulties and problems with that policy. So for three reasons, I'd encourage you not to support this. The first one would be, it's just not safe. Fins versus skin, that's pretty easy to understand. We'll see injuries. Secondly, as chief mentioned, any time spent dealing with surfers and checking boards and things like that is time when there's not eyes on the water. And with our lifeguards, they need to have their eyes on the water as much of time as possible. And then thirdly, and my surfing buddies would probably kill me to say this, because, you know, we tend to be a selfish bunch, it's not fair. If you believe in an equitable use of a resource, to be able to split the time between surfers and the body surfers and body boarders is a very equitable way to do it. So with that, I urge you to, to not support the trial period. Thank you.
Paul. Following Paul is Jay. Jay Rail.
Hello, thanks for this opportunity. I'm a resident and business owner and lifelong surfer as well. And to be honest with you, if this was allowed, I'd be one of the ones out there with a soft top out there surfing, because I'm out at T Street a lot. But to be honest, after hearing a lot of the discussion, I can really see a valid concern and reason why it may not work, may not be a good idea. What I would like to see, and this was raised, and I guess my question leads to, what would be the process to initiate another meeting to perhaps talk about a different compromise that might entail altering the hours a bit for a little more surfing time, maybe till noon on weekdays? Or even looking at the, the range of area that's, that's cut off to surfing during the blackball? Because there's a pretty wide swath of beach south of T Street proper that surfers could surf at, but it's open now just for swimming. And I don't, when I'm there, I don't see many people swimming there. So that would be my question, is what, what would be the process to initiate a meeting to discuss those things? And what kind of information would one need to bring forward to, you know, have those concerns really looked at and taken seriously?
Thanks. Yeah, that, just to answer your question, because I think you posed those, we would contemplate that in the regular course of council business. So as we direct staff, we get reports.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec's department would take up the question and provide recommendations. So that's how that, it's kind of part of a conversation, is we're always looking at these policies.
So thought about a citizen initiating?
You can, of course. You go to Parks and Rec meeting. Yeah.
Okay.
And you can bring up the question. Jay. The surf's terrible in here, by the way.
Thanks, Mayor and City Council. I come to you as a resident of San Clemente for 31 years. I'm a small business owner here in San Clemente. I own a few different businesses. The two main ones are ebodyboarding.com. We sell body boards and soft surfboards. And we also own a business called juniorguards.com, where we help supply goods for the families that are in the junior guard program. So I'm really behind the recommendation of the chief. But just a little background on myself, I moved here from Maryland because after college I had the opportunity to be a professional body boarder. And T Street was a mecca for the sport. Back in the late 80s, some of the best body boarders in California rode waves at T Street, and I knew that. So I moved here to San Clemente because of that body boarding scene there. I knew I could get better if I rode with the best riders. And one of the reasons that scene existed is because of the blackball. The body boarders didn't have to compete with the surfers, were able to catch more waves out there. Now, of course, all that is an ancillary benefit of the blackball that we enjoyed. But the real, you know, reason for the blackball, as we've all pointed out here, is for the safety of swimmers and waiters and the body boarders. So one of the things the chief brought up is not all soft surfboards are created equal. I brought in one of those INT boards that you mentioned, that have the fiberglass bottom. And you can hear, that's a pretty hard bottom. It also has the skegs on the bottom, which by the way, are replaceable with not just the plastics skegs that Mrs. Crummer mentioned, but the fiberglass ones. So you can put really sharp skegs on those. And again, takes away from the, the guards doing their eyes on the water duties, where they have to police the boards as they come down the stairs to go out and paddle out and catch waves. So, you know, I think my point here is that I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with everything that's been said here, that my feeling is that, you know, surfing on soft top boards, there's going to be a lot of influx, people on the, on the wave storms from Costco, all different types of softboards, some of them very good surfers, but some really poor surfers. And people are going to get run over and cut up by the fins. The town that I moved from in Maryland banned fins, even on the bottom of body boards, because a tourist got run over, cut, and sued the city. And we don't want that, I know, nobody wants that. So just really to, to conclude what I'm trying to say here is I'm pretty much backing up what marine safety says. I think it's a misguided idea to allow soft surfboard surfing during the blackball hours. I'm all for the blackball. And I hope it just sticks status quo. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That's it. So what's the council's pleasure here?
I'll chip in first. I know you've got a lot to say, so I'll get mine done early. And just to get the record straight, I was body surfing and body board surfing, take the bus, Pico bus to LA to down to Santa Monica Pier and go out there. And did that from the time I was 16 and probably last time I was on a board was probably when I was stupid and in my late 50s. So, so I've enjoyed it a lot and I've been out there with, you know, on both ends. I've been out there body surfing and having surfboards in the same group. And scared the crap out of me. And I knew what I was doing as far as body surfing and most of the boards out there would do what they were doing, but still accidents happen. I haven't heard who brought this forward, why we're even seeing, talking about it. But I just see an accident waiting to happen. I don't understand why, why they're contemplating it. And I agree that, you know, take a look at doing another mix as far as time or length of time or areas of how it was flagged out, as far as a blockball area goes, to maybe work out so we can give some of our surfers more, more time or more room to do it. But I don't want to infringe on the kids and the moms and everyone else that are out there swimming for the day and be concerned about the boards.
Chris? Yeah. So I'd give you a little history. This came up at a Beach, Parks and Rec Commission meeting, what, probably 18 months ago? And so Tim and I asked to have this agendized for discussion at the council level, because it really didn't go anywhere. I think because of the concerns outlined, BPR Commission is, doesn't have the strength or willpower to discuss this at the level at which we do. That being said, I recognize the concerns that the chief and the members of the community brought forward. And with that, I have some recommendations, I think, that can alleviate some of those concerns. The biggest issue for me moving forward is that this issue hasn't been addressed since the 80s. And I think we've come a long way in technology. The wave storm on the right is significantly different than the board on the left. The soft tops of today, or the softboards of today are a lot different than the softboards in the 80s. So I think there's an opportunity here. A lot of the concerns that I heard from the residents and from the chief were in the discussion of surfboards mixing with swimmers and body boarders. Well, we're not discussing that this evening, we're discussing softboards, not hardboards. So I have some ideas I'd like to talk through. But before I do that, I think I'd just like to point out the other issue, which is, you know, the city of San Clemente gives out two businesses licenses to surf schools. Both those surf schools operate with 30-plus kids in the water with soft tops. And we're not hearing a screaming of shut down the surf schools, because soft tops are dangerous when people are trying to learn on them. I'm not trying to exclude any groups here, I'm trying to be in more open, inclusive opportunity for people to use different methods during the day at T Street. So if, if we're open to it, I have some ideas, I think, that can alleviate the concerns. But if the tea leaves are three to two, then the tea leaves are three to two and we don't need to discuss it. So I guess that leaves Kathy.
Kathy?
My question is, are you open for discussion?
I'm open to hear what you have to say. I am very concerned about safety. I've tried to swim even with just the boogie boarders in there. And I can tell you during the summer, there are so many that are so inexperienced that I've had to get out of the water, because they're coming at you and they're coming right for your face. And they're looking at you like, you need to move.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm like, you need to move.
It's a blackball, it's for body boarders.
Damn those boogie boarders. We should ban boogie boarders for San Clemente.
So I'd kind of love to add boards in the midst of that also. But, so Mike, let me just ask a quick question. From T Street to the pier, is that considered all the same area as far as the blackball?
Yeah, so the, the blackball actually usually in the summertime goes from the hole or the restrooms on the south side of T Street all the way to the south side of the pier. And I'm getting nods from the chief there on that one.
Is there a reason that we couldn't split that? You know, I understand, you know, the wave and all that, but I, I didn't take it to go all the way to the pier.
So that's, that's one of my line items I was going to discuss, if you're up for discussion.
I'd like to do that.
Okay.
You know, my inclination is, on this is, is that I know it's a policy we've had since the 80s and, and I'm hearing the concerns. There's absolutely no doubt that these concerns have some validity. What, what I think, and this is when you brought it up originally here and half ago, I, you know, we will always theoretically struggle with any change. You know, there's always going to be some tradeoff there. But I think, you know, the idea that no other city has done it isn't necessarily, isn't necessarily, it's not very informed, but it also doesn't give us anything to really base it on, right? That doesn't give us any historical experience that, that we can rely on, that's valid for our residents who are pretty wary and can navigate these things. I'm supportive of trying it, you know, and seeing what the results are. And if the residents like it, if the lifeguards hate it, if the, you know, if, if people struggle with the interaction, I'm okay with, with working through that process. There's a distinct possibility that it will not be popular and it will not be successful. And at that point, then we satisfy the question. But until then, it's purely theoretical exercise, based on our, on, on ideas that disseminated in the 80s. But I, I think that just like any, you know, we drive around in massive automobiles and at any point can cause a lot of damage because of, you know, how, you know, there's, there's always an interplay in every human, you know, enterprise. There's some interplay between safety and convenience and pleasure and all these different things. And I, I really believe that it's worth taking a look at and seeing if this interplay in the surf is something that can be managed correctly and can provide some benefit to our residents without, with a, with a minimal inconvenience and/or safety consideration. So I, I'm open to the conversation.
Just add one more thing, because it, we, we, this, this council went to a lot of depth and spent a lot of money to separate more demonstratively people driving, riding their bikes by school lanes and cars. And now we're talking about wiping out that kind of division we have where people can get injured. Or my, my, the image going through my head is some mom out there with a kid that, you know, gets hit by a runaway board. And, and I just, it bothers me, that's all.
Lori?
So first of all, I'm open to any ideas that you want to talk about. I'm, I'm willing to listen to that. The, I hear 100% what the safety issues are and I have a lot of belief that there would be some genuine safety issues here. I have family that lives at T Street, so I took an opportunity to kind of check in with the neighborhood up there. And a point that hasn't been made, except it was indirectly made by our first speaker, is this could, I think your comment was an influx of a million people. And what, what I heard from the neighborhood up there is language like this, we need to have respect for T Street, we don't need more people to T Street, what's it going to do to parking and traffic in my neighborhood? Somebody pointed out that while we have 65,000 residents, we have 2 million visitors. And minus the 65,000, so this is really a policy that is not affecting our residents. It's a policy that's going to affect the 2 million people that come to San Clemente to enjoy the beaches every year. So, so I have a lot of concern about it. And, you know, it, with all of our recreational amenities, we have competitive uses, you know, the dogs would like to use the beach, we had some bicycles that wanted to be using the beach. I've heard some questions from Dana Point about would we let horses on our beach? So I, I think it's working right now. There are other options for people that want to surf during the blackball period. I guess it's, would they go into Rivvi? Is that where they would go for?
Lost Winds.
Lost Winds? Yeah. So I feel like there are choices and that we are being inclusive. And, you know, I come out of the transportation sphere of influence. It feels like taking away a stop sign from an intersection where there's always been a stop sign. And the idea of unintended consequences really speaks to me in that way. So, but again, I'm, you know, if you've got ideas, I like the way the speaker was talking about maybe we kick it back to Parks and Rec and expand the geography, the swath of beach was your language, or more hours. But I also, finally, and then I'll be quiet, all this equipment, I don't think it's fair to have somebody who's trained in marine safety to have to become an expert, be a leash police fin expert. That's not why they chose this profession.
So, okay, so with that, you know, the first thing is, chief brought up a lot of good questions, I think, and he's looking for answers. So I think if we just address those, that would be a good kicking off point. So the first one, I think the purpose of the trial is, just as Tim outlined, is, you know, this question hasn't been looked at since the 80s and this is a good opportunity to do that. How will success be measured? And can we shut it down if it's dangerous? I think first and foremost, if on day one it turns out to be the most dangerous thing you've ever seen in the water, then absolutely a recommendation as a body would be that we shut it down immediately. So I don't think that's up for discussion this evening. How will success be measured? And I think just like any other policy, are we seeing a net increase in the usership of our natural resources? Are people enjoying the new policy? Or are people being injured? I think that's very clear measuring scales. The next one was location of flags, and this was brought up by, I think, some of the residents as well. So my thought was, you know, to alleviate some of the concerns about the moms, the swimmers, the kids that go down there. And chief's concern is that I'm not asking to have the entire blackball eliminated from south of the pier all the way to the, south in the restrooms. My thought was, I walked down there today, just like you did, Lori, and from the stairs to the north side of the snack shack is 100 steps. So my thought would be from the north side of the snack shack all the way to the south side of the pier would remain blackball as it exists today, so that a mother, a father and his kid can go down to the beach, they can walk 100 steps from the end of the stairs and be in a location, there will be no soft tops allowed, there will be no hardboards allowed, it'll be just like any other blackball day. So that'd be my first recommendation. From there, my next recommendation, obviously, we talked about the eight foot length and the, the leash, I think that one's a no-brainer. Let's see, what other issues did I go with? Oh.
Does that run to the lifeguard tower? Is that where it goes? It's the, the blackball goes from the south side of?
Yeah, from the south, south side tower, all the way to the snack bar.
Okay.
So you create a safe area for kids to operate. The, the next recommendation I had, and I know one of the concerns talking to lifeguards was that, you know, this, this policy's coming in haste. So if this is something that we, you know, be better prepared doing in the month of August as opposed to July, I don't see why putting it off all over month wouldn't be necessary. The other thing, and what I'm hearing from, from lifeguards as well as the chief, is weekends are particularly busy time. And so my recommendation would be that we just do a weekday trial, so that way we're not impacting the most heavily days. Whether it be Monday through Thursday or Monday through Friday, I think either way is fine. The last one is that, what do we call it? I was going to go with the handball, but I think being that Brown's last name is a color, it should be the Brown ball.
Oh.
Yeah.
I vote for it immediately, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So make it the Brown ball. In terms of signs, I think, you know, as I was there today, my recommendation would be a minimum of three signs and they'd be yellow and color bright in nature. So the first one, the entry to the stairwell, that we already have a sign outlining the times and rules of the beach, so attached to that sign, right below it, bright yellow. And I think some of our city staff is capable of making a sign for that. And then one at the end of the stairwell, before you initiate going down the stairs, so it's right in front of you as you walk across the tracks. And then a third one on the landing, so that way there's no possible way that you're going to miss the opportunity. As far as leashes and eight foot maxes go, I, I do support the chief in saying that hard sided boards should not be acceptable, that wasn't the intention of this. So those would be outlawed. And as far as recognition of these, Lori, we're talking, Kathy, whoever brought it up, sorry, we're talking about water professionals, people that spend their life in the water. You can recognize the difference between those two. I'm sure Steve can, and Steve hasn't been in the water for 20 years. for 20 years. So, um, I'm wholly confident that our lifeguards will be able to spot the difference between a hard-sided or a hard-topped board versus a soft-top board. So those would be my recommendations. And I, like I said, it's just a trial period. And if any time, uh, the chief sees that this is too dangerous or unnecessary, or it's not working out well, then we eliminate it. But I think the question needs to be asked. We haven't looked at it for 30-plus years, and I think now's the time. We've had a change in technology, and I, I think there's an opportunity here.
I'm going to support Chris's recommended changes, and I think it's worth a try. I think Monday through Friday is a good, um, is a good thing. They keep it off the Saturday and Sunday. Monday through Friday, I guess it ends at five, right, on Friday? Uh, the, uh, right?
Uh, six.
Six, six on Friday. Try it Monday through Friday, month of August. Give some time for the signs and everything to be put up there.
Before we go there, I'm, I'm trying to pull this up, and our assistant city manager doesn't know either. There's got to be some insurance implications here, and I just am not familiar enough with our JPIA policy. And so I think we need to understand what our coverage is and if we're going to need additional coverage and what the liabilities are, um, before we contemplate the test, just so we're clear on that. And maybe nothing is needed, but, um, I, and I just can't get there fast enough in the insurance policy, so.
I would, I would say that as part of the motion, that if there's no insurance impacted, um, no insurance impact that's found, then, you know, we proceed.
Yeah, I, I would rather us on a trial run, do it Monday through Thursday.
Yeah.
Because then we, because we, you, during the summertime, people just don't come here on weekends.
Yeah.
But a lot of times it'll extend weekends, and we have the biggest crowds of kids and moms and stuff like that. So if you pare it down to the one-month trial, and we get a, a green light from our insurance, and, um, you pare it to the Monday through Thursday, as you're talking about, in the specific area you're talking about, with the signage of the brown ball that you're talking about, then, uh, then I would probably go ahead and, reluctantly, but I would approve it.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Why hurry to do it now, this summer? Why, why not do it, if there, if there was a trial, why not do it after the summer peak, locals, and we try this out with local people?
So, I can address two concerns. First one is after the summer peak, it goes back to anybody can surf at any time. So there is no trial necessary at that point. Um, when, when Tim and I gave direction, which was supported by council at the time to discuss this matter, it was, uh, I think it was two winters ago, and we said to marine safety, either this summer or next summer, we're going to do a trial. And so the fact that it came to us in June of this year was when staff had time to bring it.
Just for clarification, it went to the VPR Commission on June 6th of 2017, and then the council gave direction at the May 9th, 2017 meeting, uh, for staff to come back with a pilot program. Um, and I think the comments that Councilmember Hamm said was that it was too soon to try to implement for the summer because of being May, and so give us time to come back for the next summer.
So now we're June?
Yeah. We're right here.
Yeah, so, uh, Joey, you want me to outline those issues again? Okay, so my motion would be that we approve a trial period in the month of August, which would be, include eight-foot soft surfboards, not hard-railed surfboards, with leashes, um, Monday through Thursday, from the location of just on the north side of the snack shack down to the restrooms south of T Street. We would have three signs at a minimum, which would be yellow in color and designed by city staff, which would be located at the entry to the, uh, overpass, at the end of the overpass before you initiate down the steps, and then one at one of the landings at the bottom of the steps, any landing of staff's choice. Um, and then we would look at, ensure that there would be no JPIA, uh, major concerns that would be an impediment to this.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. So we have a motion by Hamm, second by Brown. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Opposed.
Passes 3-2. Give it a shot. Thank you, staff.
Oral communications, there are no cards. Um, city manager?
Um, council comment, or city manager comments?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Laura, if you would, really quick. In light of the homeless issue that the city of San Clemente has been dealing with, um, one of the things that we took notice with was public outreach and education. And so if you could take one and pass it down. What we've done is we've created some informational cards, uh, and other information that we're going to be making available at all of our facilities, starting now. Um, I've given you your own little personal amount of paraphernalia. So we have a brochure that we've created. We have business cards that can be utilized to provide to homeless individuals. And then we've also created a very simple flyer of the do's and don'ts as it relates to dealing with homeless people. Uh, I want to note that this is a work in progress. Um, and as council adopted, uh, the budget with Mercy House at the $75,000, we'll be coming back and editing this to include Mercy House once their services come into effect within the next, I'll say, 30 to 60 days. Um, we also have a website now devoted to homelessness with this information as well, where people can go to and get information. And so I just wanted to provide that. We'll make sure at all council meetings going forward that this is available in the back as well for the public when they come. Um, but I just wanted to share this, and I want to give, uh, major kudos to Samantha Thomas and Mika Takazuki from Community Development who spearheaded this and put this together. So with them, I really, really appreciate what they went into this. Um, there's the website as well. And so, um, I just wanted to give this to council as an FYI and let council know if there's any feedback, comments that they'd like. We're open to anything. Um, but it's all, the whole purpose is to educate the community as to what can be done, what can't be done, and the recommendations, uh, with dealing with the homeless. So with that, that's the only report I have, sir.
This is terrific. Thank you, Eric. I've been, uh, something that a resident had kind of forwarded to us as a, as a thought, and it was something staff is already working on, so I'm glad it came into fruition in development. Uh, for those who are passionate about this issue, uh, from a public safety perspective, particularly those pressing for more police services, uh, frankly, this is exactly the type of thing when we can use a little activism and assistance on this question. Uh, you can get copies at the community center, community development, all of the city offices.
City Hall, all city facilities, absolutely, Vista Hermosa, et cetera.
Happy to give you some that you can, uh, distribute to friends and associates and those who need it. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
City attorney?
We have no report.
Under council members, uh, League of California Cities Annual Conference is on September 12th through the 14th. And, um, I was wondering if you would like to appoint a voting delegate and one or two alternates?
Steve loves to hang out Long Beach. I vote for him.
I'll second that.
Whoa.
It escalated quickly. Woo, that got out of control.
All's in favor?
I think Steve hasn't been to one yet.
Well, that'll be fine, except that I'll have to try to commute from Palm Desert, where I'm at a trade show for two weeks.
All right, so I was being, I was kidding. Is there anybody that is available for this? I am not available on this date for this conference.
I went two years ago to Kathy's point.
I have a question. Are the city managers going to this?
Yes.
I say we appoint the city managers.
Oh, cool.
I think we can.
We did it last year.
I move that we appoint James. We got a motion by Brown, second by, with Eric as the alternate. I got a motion by Brown, second by Schwartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes 5-0. Congratulations, gentlemen.
We have critters for you. Okay. They're coming. There they are.
So, it's that time of year, and especially now that summer is here, and our pets get out, or our pets have pets, and they get out. So, we, we have, we have, um, some, some pets in our shelter that are looking for a permanent home. First is America. And I don't see, I expect her to be red, white and blue, but that's, she's eight years old, spade, short-haired cat. She's got a very sweet disposition and does well with other cats. She enjoys naps, taking walks around the cat room, and taking more naps, which sounds like most cats to me. And, um, now we have Bean. Oh, look at that. He's currently seeking his forever home. He's nine years old. He's spade, uh, pug and beagle mix. Uh, he turned into the shelter because he did not get along with his doggy sister. So he should be possibly a dog, only dog at home, but he's looking to fill up someone's heart. And then we have Darla. She's a seven-year-old female spade domestic long-haired cat who would go well on during Halloween. And she's a very sweet girl, quiet and gentle. She's looking for a forever home and prefer quiet enjoyment where she's the only cat in the house. And then we have Patty. And why they named her after my mother-in-law, I don't know, but she's a one-year-old female spade lab mix, and one of my best dogs ever was that.
I can't even process how many jokes I have.
I just, wait, back up. I didn't finish. She just recently arrived at the shelter looking for a forever home. She's full of energy and waiting to play with you. So please give her a call.
Out of respect for your mother-in-law, I will not say any jokes that are currently in my mind right now.
Thank you. San Clemente Shelter, uh, the San Clemente Dana Point Shelter, uh, is, uh, is a, one of the, um, is, is, I'm sorry, will join other shelters across the nation in the annual Clear the Shelters Adoption Day. That's coming up on August 18th this year. And please, you'll be, there'll be discounts on all kinds of things. And go there, pick out your, your, your pet. Uh, if you don't know where it is, um, go south on Lapada till you can't go anymore and turn right. You can't miss it. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, Lori?
Um, I have a request to agendize two items. Um, the first one is, um, I'd like, and the city manager knows about this, a, uh, report on the cost of a federal lobbyist that could help us with transportation and nuclear energy matters. Um, and we've talked about that. I'd like to see what that looks like and how we would fund that. Um, the second thing, um, I had the opportunity to go into Solana Beach on Monday and meet with their city manager, with Tom Rendina and their mayor on, um,
Is it Solana, Mr.?
Solana.
San Diego, right?
Yeah, because we are San Diego Gas and Electric. And, um, they are a community choice energy community now. And this is something a, a group of residents has come forward and asked me to take a look at. And the headline in community choice energy is basically a city, um, takes back the purchase of public utilities with an eye toward a more, um, a, a cost-efficient portfolio and a portfolio that leans more heavily toward renewable energies. And, um, there's, um, I can talk more about it at our next meeting. What I wanted to do was specifically ask for a staff report that gives an update on San Clemente's, um, fulfillment of the Climate Action Plan, because this is sort of like Senate Bill Two where we were the last ones to the party. Um, we have to, um, by 2030 have our Climate Action Plan worked out. And so cities like Solana Beach, Apple Valley, Lancaster, Hermosa Beach, um, they're mostly coastal cities, have converted to this community choice energy model. So I'd like an update, a staff report that gives an update on our Climate Action Plan, um, and where we are in completing that. And then as part of that, I'll talk a little bit about what, uh, we learned from Solana Beach in case it's of interest to the council people that'll be here after November.
Steve, anything else? Kathy?
I do have something. Um, I wanted tonight to talk about, uh, my position and clarify my vote on the sheriff's contract that we voted on, on, at the June 12th council meeting. Uh, I looked at the action agenda from that, and it has me down as a no. Um, I was not a no on hiring more sheriffs. I was actually a yes, and I was making a motion to add three sheriffs, um, deleting a, an extra investigator that we had added, and adding a full-time crime prevention specialist. I think we were all kind of on the way to do that, um, except there was some brinkmanship on the part of the sheriff's department. I'm not saying our lieutenant, but the, uh, officers that were here came up to the dais and stopped us from doing that. I still don't feel good about that occurring. I thought our vote was based on, uh, a lot of work by our staff, a lot of work by our residents, the task, the Public Safety Task Force. Um, and we should have gone that way, in, in my opinion. But I am, I do want to clarify that the reason I voted no was because I thought the two deputies was not enough, and it needed to be three. And so I'll be clarifying that again at the next meeting. I would have done that tonight if the minutes had been here, but we didn't have the opportunity to have that. The one thing I would ask is if the council consider maybe a six-month check-in date where we see, we have direct staff to look at the sheriff's contract and, and what our contract entails that we can and can't do, and comes back to us, uh, for an update on that. And maybe an update on the clarification of the investigator position.
You good? So I, Kathy, I'm glad you clarified that you were in support of three deputies and not two. Uh, let me just clarify for the people at home and Eric who's sitting there a little confused. It wasn't our beloved Chief Peters who said that we couldn't delete a, uh, investigator. It was his supervisor, I think it was the chief of finance, who said, "No, you can't do that."
Executive Director.
Executive Director of Finance who said, "No, you can't do that. This isn't an à la carte menu," as the mayor put it. So, um, I'm sure our chief would be more than willing to take another deputy, but it was his superior officers who told him that was not an actual option for us. I like the idea of a six-month checkup, you know, to, to look at the decision, uh, to get a report from the chief on how it's working. Uh, I think we have the opportunity during that time to look at the detective caseload and learn a little bit more, because obviously we need some education on, you know, how that's working and the value. Uh, but I like putting a little placeholder on the calendar and just taking a look at it. There's no reason why we have to pack it all in during budget season. We should be able to look at these questions when the heat of the budget is in, upon us and negotiations and learn more about, you know, uh, our sheriff's department. And so that when it comes to the budget season, we're operating from a knowledge base as opposed to simply a fiscal choice component.
Yeah, in addition to that, the, the driving force on a lot of our adjustments, uh, was the over, uh, the overtime budgeting and how we're going to be using that. So, again, with the six-month timeframe,
We could look at the.
I would like that to be included. That's all I was going to say.
Okay. He, I didn't know you could see her from that site.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive, dude.
Yeah, I've been there thirty-something years.
I have, I have one more.
One more thing?
Actually.
Oh, I was making it to.
Real quick, uh, last Thursday, I caught wind because Eric told me that at the library, they were holding a graduation for the Career Online High School.
Oh, cool.
Uh, this was brought about by the Friends of the Public Library. Um, let's see, did I get that right? The Friends of San Clemente Library. And they pushed the library system to get this. And so I got to watch, uh, there was four people that graduated, people that were in their 30s, families, never got their high school diploma. This isn't just a GED, this is an actual high school diploma. So I wanted to bring it up, uh, if anyone, you know anyone, or there's anyone that wants to get their high school diploma, it's never too late by what we saw at that graduation. And, um, just contact the, uh, Orange County library system or, uh, local San Clemente library. And Karen Wall did a great job with that. They had, uh, uh, what is it called? Pomp and Circumstance. They had tassels, they had everything. So I was very surprised. And the, the last thing I want to say is kudos to our, uh, our, I'm looking at it, the, um, Chamber of Commerce. I got, we got, I was thinking DBA in my head, and I couldn't get it out. The Chamber of Commerce just came out with their new community and business directory, and they've done such a great job, and I feel like we're moving in a good direction with them. One of the things I want to say that I'm happy about is they got the code compliance map in here for the city of San Clemente, what the areas are for our officers. And I thought that was great. But I want to read just a quick excerpt of what they said of, about San Clemente. There's seven secrets to San Clemente. Um,
Don't get away.
No, 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 I know. "The power of the people is one. Uh, what makes San Clemente the place to be? It's the people, of course. People love living and working here because it's beautiful, easy place to be. Our city doesn't admit the vibe of a typical touristy beach town. Instead, San Clemente exudes an irresistible feeling of place that's all its own. It is, and, uh, I'm sorry, it's plus a sense of community that is genuine and palpable." It is, I'm sorry, it's plus a sense of community that is genuine and palpable. And this is coming from our Chamber of Commerce.
Who was the writer of that? Who wrote that?
Uh, wait a minute.
Did they actually member the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, they are. I, I saw it earlier, and I don't see it now. But that was great, and I just want to talk about how well we can do as a city when we all work together and our communities, what's good for residents and businesses. I think it's a win-win. But this was just a great thing, and I thought they captured San Clemente better than they ever have. So, I was really glad to see it.
Thank you, Kathy. Chris?
Yeah, I got a few things, guys. So, the first one is our former mayor, Kathy Ward, brought in this article from the OC Register. Okay, where you at? There you go. And it just talks about the increased number of people using emergency room visits. So, during Obamacare, the talk was that it was going to go down. We've actually seen an increase in emergency room visits, which brings up the importance of our hospital and emergency room, which is still an outlying decision that needs to be made. So, the fight still isn't over. We still need emergency room. It's still impacting our residents and the residents of communities around us. So, hopefully, we'll get a decision on that soon, and it'll be supported. The other show I want to bring up, I think Kathy, you adjourned in honor of Mrs. Lovemark last meeting. I want to say a couple of words. I know I had to step out early and go back to the fire station earlier than the finish of the meeting, but Mrs. Lovemark was a tremendous asset to this community. Generations of students learned from her at San Clemente High School, as well as Dana Hills High School. Her home is located on the beach between T Street and the, and Lost Winds. Everybody knew Mrs. Lovemark. If you were lucky enough to have her as a teacher, you were happy to have her. And if you're lucky enough to hang out with her on the beach, you were happy to see her body surfing. So, she was a great woman, and her remembrance will be this Monday at the Casa Romanica. The next two items I have is, the first one, I want to just echo something that the mayor brought up earlier this evening, which was term limits. I was going to bring that up this evening as a discussion item. Sounds like Joanne's already done the brunt of the work, so my ask would be that it be agendized for discussion by this council. I would like it to be agendized before this council gets off, being that, Lori, you've been on for 12 years now, and you have some insight. Tim, you've been on for eight years. I think there's a lot of good insight that you guys can bring to the table. So, hopefully, there's support to agendize that for discussion, not just get a report. Okay?
Yeah. It would be, you'd have to get a majority, not two.
Okay.
So, once you got three, then you're good.
And then, the final one is, I've been talking with Cecilia about modifying our shopping cart requirements. And so, I'm going to ask that we agendize a discussion for shopping cart retaining systems. So, we have, one of our shopping centers currently has a shopping cart retaining system, and it's just basically a security system that, once the shopping cart passes outside their property, a lock locks, and it's unable to go any further. So, it's something we can do retroactively and require businesses to get, so I'd like that to be agendized for discussion as well.
There's no opposition on that? Great. I'm the last one. I just want to wish everyone a very wonderful and happy Independence Day. We live in a great nation. It's always wonderful to celebrate its birthday. We do that really well. And San Clemente in particular, we've got the great fireworks show on the Fourth of July, and then we also have the Condor Squadron, which is going to come flying down.
And?
Yeah. It's great. We just, we live in an incredible place. So, I want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. We will be, it's going to be a little while till we get back together again. It's going to be on June 24th. So, until then, city is still.